So we're back. Did the gentleman ever get back to you about being lost in the woods or wherever he is?
No.
Okay, all right. So Citizens Sign has done grant for locations on 196 September message board. Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we move forward towards September Town Meeting, we keep working towards building a presentation for Town Meeting. We have some updated graphics for the electronic sign. I don't know if John, if you have those available. You know, Nick's working on a PowerPoint for Town Meeting. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, we may have addressed all of Town Meeting's concerns that we heard from the last time. We have a memo from the Police Department, et cetera. And we have, we've had a discussion at least about a policy for the use of the message board. So I'm hopeful that we will have addressed Town Meeting's concerns. And again, we did, we did contract with one of our engineers to draw up some professional drawings, which John is about to put up there, that will hopefully provide a better visual of what we're trying to do on that corner. I don't know if Nick, if you have anything further you want to add to that?
Yeah, and that's a fantastic goal also. So I don't know if this went out to everyone or not yet, but not yet. Okay, so whenever we get a chance to review this, this is a really nice expansion of the measurements and the renderings of what we're hoping to do on that corner, right? And really clarify, it's not only the height and the width of the sign, but really like the overall landscaping of what could be done there, given the signal post and electrical box, which at least the one that's to the right, that gray one, has to remain. And of course, the signal post has to remain. But I think that when you start to see the overview of the, call it a blueprint of the area, you can start to see like those concerns around lines of sight and, you know, setback from the sidewalk become ameliorated, in my opinion. Like, I think that the way this is positioned really does give plenty of lines of sight an opportunity for pedestrian and vehicle traffic. So I encourage everyone on the board, when this goes out to you, to review it and, you know, come back with any questions. But I think that this, these sketches alone, I think, answer a lot of the questions that Town Meeting had. And then I know that, you know, we have the draft policy in front of us. And I don't know if it's the board's pleasure to vote on that specifically between now and before Town Meeting, and we have our meeting before Town Meeting on the 23rd. But I would like to ask the board if there are any specifics that we think we want to include in the draft policy, you know, around, you know, length of message or overall messages per hour or day, or things of that nature that we wanted to draft and put in there, at least for continued discussion, we should. You know, the more I think about it, the more I get concerned about picking specific font sizes without seeing it first and knowing what we would want to do. I feel like that's putting the cart before the horse, really. You know, but I think at this point, we could probably discuss, given what Sergeant Abass put in his report and everything we've gathered, you know, messages per hour, per day, those types of things, and put that into the policy to kind of expand it a little further. But again, I think having a draft policy, even to the point we have it now, is far and way better than the last one we were before Town Meeting. So I think we're checking a lot of the boxes, but I would ask that if anyone on the board has any thoughts or concerns that we should be addressing, please get them to me so that we can have that discussion, you know, and get that to you here.
Okay. Questions, Sarah?
I do have a question. So one of the concerns at our recent planning board meeting was around the size and the language around the size. And the fact that we're looking at one this size, but the policy says we can go this size. So there's concern about that. And I just, I haven't seen, I'm sorry, I haven't seen the policy, or if there's been any edits to that to address those concerns?
So the size concerns were from the actual language of the article itself, right?
Yes.
And that we agreed with planning that we would adjust down from the, whatever it was, eight, 10 to, you know, something closer to the four, eight that we were hoping to achieve. And then the reason that we wanted to leave it a little bit more loose was because we didn't know, like, what the perimeter of the sign was going to be exactly. And if we said four by eight, and it wound up being, you know, 49 inches by whatever, then come back before everyone for an adjustment, right? So, you know, that was the concession we were making with Planning Board. Mr. Gaffey did not seem, you know, pleased or amused by that whatsoever, you know. But yeah, we can bring it down for sure.
Yeah, and I understand the need for a little bit of wiggle room and not having it be actually precise and, you know, leaving some space. But I did agree that that was a lot of wiggle room.
Sure, yeah.
And it makes a big difference. And just seeing the visual on screen, it doesn't look jarringly, jarringly large to me of a sign. So that will help, I think, hopefully alleviate some fears around that. And I don't think I have any other questions.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll make sure that the draft goes back out to everyone, too, so everyone can have a chance to review that.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just want to echo, if I could see the draft before, and Nick, if I could see maybe a copy of the PowerPoint before.
Yeah, for sure.
I'd love to take a look and if there's anything we think you should add, I can definitely.
Yeah, my goal is to get something out to you guys to review by the end of the week. That way, we can take a look at it and either just, you know, one by one provide feedback or in our next meeting, you know, we can make adjustments with the slide.
That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim?
All I want to say is that looks a thousand times better than what's out there now.
Well, thank you, and I can't agree with you more. I think this has got to be so much better than the plastic signs hanging up there and whatever else, take them down, put them up. We can put it all on the board and we can have a great, I think this is a great, great idea for the town of Burlington. I think it shows a definite, definite combination of old school and new school together with the bricks. I've even talked to Mr., one of the contractors that might possibly get the job about an old fashioned stone wall out in front of that, like they have throughout town, instead of the brick to give it a little bit different atmosphere. I just think that this is a great idea. I think the town needs this and deserves it, and I am 100% in favor, and I can't wait to see the PowerPoint presentation. So there's your discussion. Okay. You all set?
Yes, thank you.
Everybody all set with this? Mr. Sagorino, are you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Medication time. They're watching us.
That was fun.
Are we good?
I didn't see an error.
No.
Something popped up quick, but was it something like reconnecting you to your network?
Okay. 197, September Town Meeting warrant articles. Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's okay, I'd like to turn it over to John. We had some specific articles that we wish the board to take a position on for Town Meeting. And then, of course, the board has the ability to take a position on any other additional articles that you wish to advance at Town Meeting.
We also have Mr. Vaughn here. Is that something or? Very brief. Mr. Chairman, we didn't start with Mr. Vaughn.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, everyone. For the record attorney, Mark Vaughn with Reema Bronstein, representing Simon Property Group, owners of the Burlington Mall in connection with the warrant article that has been submitted for the upcoming Town Meeting. So I know we had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to meet with the Alcohol Subcommittee, both members of Spejo and Morandi. Appreciate your time just to talk about this. But just by way of background, again, warrant article was approved by Burlington Town Meeting, believe it or not, back in 2018 to create nine additional liquor licenses for the Burlington Mall, five full licenses and four beer and wine licenses. At the time that that was adopted by the Burlington Town Meeting, there was actually no time limit that was put into the home rule petition in terms of when those licenses needed to be utilized by. However, the state legislature is part of their process in approving the home rule petition, which is required, that has to go through the legislative process. They did put a provision in indicating that the licenses shall be granted not later than five years after the effective date of this act. The effective date of the act not being until January 2020, when Governor Baker had signed the act. So if you can think back a little bit, January of 2020, what happened a couple of months later, March of 2020, the COVID outbreak and everything that transpired after that in terms of the impact on the retail, construction, everything else. Obviously, there was a bit of a delay in being able to utilize all of these licenses. Notwithstanding that, actually, of the nine that were granted, four of the five full licenses have been utilized. Should I keep going or?
Put the engine like the car.
Yeah, that's right. Did that about a year with mine now, yeah.
Thought that was the intro to the Mark Vaughn Show.
Yeah, yeah. So four of the five full licenses have been, have been used, and then two of the four beer and wine licenses have been. And we feel reasonably comfortable that with an extension of time for the legislation, all of those licenses will be used, as I think, you know, Burlington Mall has proven to be a popular destination as a dining hub, and certainly, there's been success there. So I'm not going to babble on, but the article that's been submitted, we weren't sure if Town Meeting actually needed to take action on this, because it was the legislature that put the time limit in to begin with. But in speaking to Representative Ken Gordon and his talking to folks at the State House, he felt that the best approach was for Town Meeting just to endorse a three-year extension of time to use the licenses. And he felt that that time period of three years was consistent with the delays associated with COVID and the ongoing disruption there. So again.
Okay, great. Thank you. We did have a meeting, myself and Mike, on this. So Mike, you want to go over the meeting?
Sure, I can.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark. I'm very happy with what Simon has done with the mall and the redevelopment. And I think an extension would be a good idea. Anything we can do to help the mall and help them continue with the redevelopment and re, kind of restructuring over there, what they're doing is a great thing for the town, a great thing for our town economy. So to extend these liquor licenses, I think, would only be fair, especially with the delays we've had with COVID, and I'm in full support of it. And we had that discussion at our Alcohol Subcommittee meeting. It almost seems like a housekeeping thing to me, but it seems like it's pretty serious with going all the way to Town Meeting for it. All it is, seems like, is a few month extension on the liquor license. So go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, at the meeting itself, we had discussed quite a bit, and I thought the meeting went very well. And like Mike had said earlier, we're here to make everything work in town. I see no reason to not do this, to move forward with it. I think it's a great idea. I also can't really say. I will ask the board members, Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have subcommittees to make recommendations to us, and I will continue that practice of supporting the subcommittee's recommendation. I will support this.
Nick?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I get that there were the delays because of COVID, you know, and the mall's doing pretty good. You know, I don't know that I ever really supported this to begin with, you know. So I don't know that I'm in support of the extension, but, you know, it's for Town Meeting to decide, so. Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Sarah?
Just one question. Do you see three years as being enough time?
I do, yeah. I think that actually they are in discussions with a restaurant group currently that would potentially be that, the fifth full liquor license restaurant to use one. But I don't think that's going to happen before January, which is when these expire. But as far as the other two beer and wine licenses, I do think those would be utilized within three years. And I think it's probably also important to note that the way this special act is structured, it's not just the Burlington Mall piece itself that Simon controls, but as the board may know or may not know, some of you, Macy's actually owns their parcel, so they would be part of this as well. So I think that there's been discussion about the future, kind of evolution of the entire property over there, including Macy's. And I think the ability to have these types of licenses available to promote that type of economic development would be, would be good. But I know that's a long-winded answer to your short question of, yeah, I think three years is good, so.
Okay. No, I have nothing further. I think it makes sense.
Okay. Well, with that being said. Let's run approval, right? Mr. Denizio, your call?
Yeah, so the board had planned to take a position on Articles 3, 4, 7, and 19, and have added Article 5 and 8. So I don't know if you want to vote this so that Mr. Vaughn can be done, or you want to?
I think we should vote this right now and let Mr. Vaughn go on his way for the night instead of hanging around and watching this fabulous board work.
Always, always a privilege to witness you in action, so.
So I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We support warrant Article 5 for Town Meeting.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained. 4-1-0. All set, sir? Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Denizio, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also have Dr. Conti and Bob Kuhn here to talk about Article 8 with the Fox Hill School.
Okay. Absolutely.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, can I just take 30 seconds ahead of any conversations about Fox Hill? Because I'm not sure if the board is aware that the Simon Group also has a Simon Youth Foundation, and they are our partners in alternative programming at the high school. They've been our partners for about seven or eight years, and they provide scholarships to students who have difficulty graduating high school. So again, I know the Simon Mall is a business partner here, and you guys work with them very closely, but their foundation arm is a great partner for the school district, and they have provided tens of thousands of dollars in scholarships to some Burlington students. So just, just so your word.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I would have known that. Like I've always said, I just stay in my lane, and that's a school department issue, so I don't, that's fantastic. That is, I hope everybody heard that. Not this room, the TV. But thank you. We're right ahead, sir. John, you want to start this off? Or right there?
Well, I know the board was able to get the Town Meeting back up, which had a condensed version, a four-page memo with links to the website and Fox Hill School and those questions that you will add.
Okay, so we have to make a decision whether or not, because I've gotten a couple of phone calls, whether or not we want to make a stance on this or not make a stance on this. Is that correct, Mr. Sagorino? Am I doing this the right way before I get myself in trouble like I always do?
Yes, it's the board's purview to take a position on whatever articles on the warrant that they choose to.
Okay, so before we get into it, should I vote on whether or not we take the stance? Or listen to what they say and then do it the opposite way?
I think it would probably be appropriate just to ask the other members first, whether they want to take this up for discussion. If they don't want to take it up for discussion, there's probably no reason to talk about it.
Okay. So we'll start right from, right from Jimmy. Is there any discussion you'd like to have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I received no calls on this with anyone, and as you stated just a few minutes ago, we stay in our lane. So I, we typically don't vote on school committee articles. So I prefer we just continue that practice.
Mr. Priest?
I think it's worth a discussion, right? You know, it's a big project financially speaking, even with the MSBA funds, and, you know, that's an impact to taxpayers, which is our responsibility, so.
Okay.
I do think it warrants us talking about it.
Okay. Sarah?
Um, Sarah, I have a whole little spiel that I want to do on this. But, so I know there is some debate or question as to whether we should have a voice or an opinion on this article. I know the argument is that it's a school project, school committee and the building committee should, we should kind of stay out of it. This is an extremely expensive project. It's $100 million, and we're responsible for two-thirds of that, and that will affect every taxpayer in Burlington. And one of our focuses as a board is to balance the costs of basically everything in town against the tax burden for our residents. And I feel that this project falls under that purview. Therefore, it's part of our job as the select board to voice whether we support it or not. That doesn't mean we're approving or denying the project itself. That's Town Meeting's job. But they look to us for our opinions as leaders in this community for guidance. I would feel, for lack of a better word, embarrassed if at Town Meeting, when somebody stood up and said, what is the select board's view on this project? This is going to be a huge discussion. And we said, not our, not our project. We stay out of it. So that's just my opinion. I'm one person. I will defer to the rest of the body and to the chair if we just decide not to take a position. But I do want to express my strong opinion that we should. And if it's decided that we do not, I'm happy to speak with anyone in town or on Town Meeting about my personal opinion on this. That's all. Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it warrants a discussion at least here, since we have Dr. Conti and Mr. Kuna here. I did have an opinion on whether we should vote it or not, but now I'm torn with what Sarah just said, so at the very least, I think we should discuss it.
Okay. So it sounds like we're going to be discussing it, gentlemen. That's what it sounds like. So we'll discuss the article and then make a decision from that point. Okay? Everyone all right with that? Gentlemen? Any questions? Where do you want to start? Who wants to start with the questions?
I'll start. I wanted to discuss it. Thank you, Dr. Conti, for joining us tonight. Just some questions that I've ever had lingering and about the project. The current enrollment at Fox Hill, I have understanding is 441, and right now, last year, I believe it was 446. It's my understanding that this school is going to be for 325 kids. How can we justify building this school when it's, seems like it's going to be too small from the jump?
Mr. Morandi through the chair. Mr. Spejo, thank you for asking that question. I think many people have that question. Ms. Colly and I had this conversation earlier today. So in my opinion, many people are conflating enrollment with capacity, and they're two very different terms. When you work with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, you have to agree to an enrollment, which is a snapshot in time, enrollment and program drive staffing that helps really the MSBA ensure that the town isn't overbuilding or trying to do other things. That may not fit into the MSBA purview. Again, if they are going to give significant dollars, it's a very structured and scripted process. The way I try to explain this is, if you can imagine a school bus, a school bus has a certain capacity of students that it can handle. If there's an enrollment need for one year with that school bus, and we have to remove some seats to make sure that we have five or six students in wheelchairs that need to ride that bus, that may impact the number of seats available for students who don't need those spots. And that would be an enrollment issue that we would have to address the enrollment at that time, but the capacity of the bus hasn't changed. So the capacity is still what the capacity was. So in my opinion, the 325 is an enrollment number. MSBA looks at enrollment district-wide. It looks across four elementary schools, not just Fox Hill. That's a snapshot in time. The capacity of that building, though, well exceeds 325 students, and I can sort of prove that out in a couple ways. The Memorial School went through the MSBA process and was designed for 500 students through that process. And the Fox Hill School as presented is larger than the Memorial School, so that would sort of make sense. There are 30, roughly 30, 31 full-size classrooms, so you can do the math. At 18 students, we can use that. We are just dedicating some of that space because of the enrollment needs for some special ed programming. And then, Mr. Spejo, what we also did is I asked David Rosenblatt, the Fox Hill principal, to take all 441 students currently, the lab students currently, and an additional two classrooms from Pine Glen, and to place them in the Fox Hill design that's being proposed. And the students all fit, and in fact, there were seven or eight additional instructional spaces that don't exist in the current Fox Hill. So the current Fox Hill is roughly, and Bob's going to correct me, roughly 60,000 square feet. The Fox Hill that's being presented is 91,000 square feet. So I do think the 325 is a confusing number. But again, MSBA is looking at our overall elementary enrollment over four elementary schools. And even if we were to keep all 441 students at Fox Hill, placing them in the new building as proposed, the building would be much roomier and, again, much more educationally appropriate than the current, than the current building. So capacity is what I'm looking at, and the capacity of that building will really future-proof the project and allow Burlington to expand if needed and make some changes if needed to some of the programmatic spaces that we have.
Well, thank you for that answer. That really gives me some clarity and some, some of the apprehension I had about the project. So what is the capacity of the new Fox Hill school we want to build?
Well, again, I think there's, what, 31?
31 classrooms.
31 classrooms that are full-size, and if we want to fill all 31 with 18 students, again, which I wouldn't necessarily recommend, but if you're giving me sort of a top-end capacity, that gives us around, what, 500 and?
548 times eight, so this gives us?
So probably around, what, 540 students might be the upper-end capacity and, but obviously, we're going to use classrooms for that. And that doesn't include music classrooms, art classrooms, that sort of is just the classrooms that we have. So again, I think conservatively, I would say that the capacity would be roughly around 500 students is what I would say, similar to Memorial. And again, Memorial is 85,000 square feet, and this building as proposed is 91,000 square feet.
So there wouldn't, so expanding that capacity from 325 to 500 would not come at the expense of any other programming?
Again, we'd have to make some adjustments in programming in terms of, we have some of those classrooms now dedicated for special ed programming. Again, like my example on the bus, we may need to remove some seats to service the population we have now, but it would be easier at some future life of the building, future decade. Again, the building's going to be hopefully used, utilized for 50, 60 years, similar to the current Fox Hill, that those classrooms would be available for future growth if needed. So when we place students, we look at both program and, again, and enrollment. But enrollment doesn't define the capacity of the building. Enrollment is the MSBA snapshot of what our enrollment is going to be in 2028 when the building opens.
Thank you. Will there be any redistricting when the new school opens?
There may be, but I can't say. We look at redistricting every year. But as I stated, I would feel very comfortable opening up the building, if the building were available this fall, I would have been very comfortable opening up the building with the current Fox Hill student population. And again, the principal also placed the lab programming, which is a collaborative program that currently exists, and the addition of the Pine Glen programming that we also committed to MSBA. So I'd be very committed to fitting all those students in Fox Hill and having the building work more effectively than the current Fox Hill building.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. And I want to thank you and members of the committee, I know John and Paul Sonnen for all the hard work you did on the building committee. I know it was a tough, a tough process, and we came to the, the single Fox Hill. I know it's a need, and I know we also need a new high school and a new Pine Glen. Is there a timetable for those projects? Will they get left behind if we move forward with Fox Hill? Is there a timetable to get started on those projects as well?
Again, I don't have exact timelines, Mr. Spejo, but the Burlington High School feasibility study is in process, so I think there's a timeline associated with that. But we're working on the program document, which sort of drives the designer moving forward. So I'd say we're at least a year behind the Fox Hill process for even having some sort of options to discuss. So the timeline moving forward, whether it's a renovation, whether it's partially done, all those have yet to come. They're probably about a year in the making. And my only pushback would be on replacing Pine Glen. Again, I'm, we haven't even started to study that yet. Pine Glen is structurally very sound. So from a building envelope perspective, Bob can speak to the building envelope, but from a educational programming perspective, Pine Glen is much more conservatively designed. Their classrooms are rectangular, their walls are solid. And so I think we've just air-conditioned or in the process of finishing the heat pumps, air conditioning of the building. I think the building could last sort of long into the, long into the future. So what is that, 10, 15 years? I don't, it's certainly going to outlast me. I'm not in any rush to replace that building. And again, I like to use images because it's simpler for me to remember. Fox Hill to me is the light blue tuxedo with ruffles. Again, great in its day, very fashionable. Pine Glen is the sort of black tuxedo, conservative, timeless design, and we have to keep the building updated. I think it has some needs. The roofs were recently done. The roofs were recently done. Again, Bob can talk to the building envelope stuff, but I think that building can be well utilized into the future.
Okay. Well, thank you for your answers, and I know you guys are the experts when it comes to the schools. And my only concern is from a fiduciary point of view for the town, what other projects we have coming down the line. And I would really love to see a new high school built, and we do the Fox Hill. With the police station, there's a lot of moving pieces, and I think as a town, we should do better in kind of planning out all these capital projects so we can kind of map them out and get them all built. And I feel like we've kind of gotten a little bit behind in some of our capital improvements, but I'm glad to see we have progress moving forward. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I said earlier was based on typically, the board doesn't take a position on school articles, but on a personal level, as an individual, I'm 100% behind this project. I think it's well overdue. We need it. I mean, you drive by the Fox Hill school and you see the temporary, whatever you call them...
Modulators.
Modulators. We need a new Fox Hill school. I'm glad you say that Pine Glen's in great condition because I went there, so it's all a position.
Mr. Tigges, we've added electricity since then, so it's functioning much better.
And air conditioning. But no, as an individual, I'm fully supportive of this project. We need it, long overdue. I do like Mike's idea of getting a timeline so we can start to actually merge, maybe, again, this is how we start to merge the town and the schools to talk a little better, the boards to talk better. Let's take the school's timeline, let's take the town's timeline, let's put them together so we can figure out, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, what we'll be looking at, so we don't have these pop-up, not I don't say pop-up discussions, but discussions saying, "Oh, we need this, this, and this right now," and we could space them out more efficiently to benefit the tax rates of the town. So, I'm 100% behind it. My prior statement was because we typically never took votes on school articles, that's all.
Thank you. Nick?
Thanks, Chairman. You know, if it wasn't for the fact that Burlington grew so fast in the '60s, we wouldn't all be here right now, I don't think, having, you know, a discussion so specifically tied to the financial burden that, you know, could be, you know, put in front of us. And so, you know, it's, I guess you could argue, it's, you know, a burden of our success to a certain extent, you know? But Fox Hill and Pine Glen were built, what, roughly two years apart in '62, '64, somewhere in there. High school opened in '72, you know? So, I mean, you know, everything kind of all happened very, very fast in that decade, even less than really, you know, when we look at things. And so, you know, I think that what the overarching theme of what's troubled me about this particular project is, you know, not this project itself, so much so, like, I think what Mike and Jim were saying, like, what happens next, right? Like, what we do with Pine Glen, what we do with, you know, the high school. So, I guess, before I just blabber on for minutes at a time, my question, Bob, probably to you, is, what's the shelf life of Pine Glen and the high school? Like, I mean, we do a fantastic job of keeping these buildings in functional states, right? But like, what's the actual reality of these buildings that were built, you know, 70 years ago?
I mean, if we're just talking the bones of the building structurally, the building is sound. We have a report done that was completed in 2017 and another one completed in 2023 that state that. So, we're not a concern right now for the building falling apart. The roof has about 15 years left on its warranty. That doesn't mean it has to be replaced right at the end, that just means something to consider. We have boilers that are probably five to 10 years out from needing a major overhaul. So, those are the major, major systems in there. The electrical system was upgraded about 15 years ago to a new service. And as Dr. Conti just mentioned, through the town's generous support, we are completing a HVAC, air conditioning, and heat pump system right now. So, again, the building is continually maintained by our maintenance department, obviously the funding as well that has come through from town meeting. So, it's tough to say that a building will expire, you know, at 20 years from now, 30 years from now, sure. As long as we stay on top of it and a tree doesn't fall on top of it, again, we can continue to maintain. It really becomes a conversation similar to the police station, right? Like, how much more money do you want to put into it, right? At some point, right? If there's a major overhaul that needs to happen, it's a balance of a financial conversation versus what's our next project. So, again, do I think the building will fall down tomorrow? No. I've been asked publicly if the building's been condemned? No, it has not, right? So, do I think we have 15, 20 years left in it? We'll make it happen if that's what the town needs us to do, and I think we have enough support and good bones to make that, you know, happen for you.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, you know, it's... I've been careful not to, you know, put the role of Chicken Little here, right? You know, Paul and John walked me through, you know, the numbers that, you know, they kind of ran with ways and means, you know? And even conservatively, I'm still concerned, right? You know, we've already dumped a ton of money into Fox Hill, right? Like, to jam the brakes on this project now is also super concerning, right? That's for town meeting to decide, not for me to decide, right? We all know that. You know, so whatever town meeting decides, that is absolutely their choice. You know, I feel like we should have been having this conversation 15 years ago, right? Not three years ago. You know, again, nothing, I think anyone in this room could have had any control over at that time. You know, but I am concerned for the average taxpayer, and I am increasingly concerned for the taxpayer in general. I mean, we have that conversation every year when we talk about the tax law, right? You know, and again, it is a burden of our success. Property value goes up, taxes go up, everyone bears the brunt of that burden, and it's becoming increasingly difficult for folks who've lived here for a long time to maintain that and for really for younger folks to find a way into the community, right? I popped into an open house the other day just for, you know, giggles. I won't say the other word, you know, because I'm curious to see what these bigger homes are looking like and what they're selling for. And I was talking to the contractor, and he's like, "I've sold six of these in the last year and a half, and of the six I sold, there was one kid," right? And so, you know, yeah, we're tearing down houses, we're building houses, people are buying and moving in, but our student population is shrinking, you know, as a direct result to the overall cost of houses. You know, so I am concerned from a financial perspective. You know, I honestly don't know what town meeting will decide. You know, I've been following the project closely, not just because I'm a Fox Hill parent, but, you know, because, you know, once we kind of had an idea what the numbers were, I was very curious. So, you know, I mean, I wish I had more questions for you. I appreciate you guys being here. You know, I'm curious to see what everyone else on the board thinks it feels. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Mike actually asked a lot of my questions, so I appreciate you being here and being able to answer those. I did have a few others, and I believe I remember seeing something, you know, during the police station discussion about, and this may have been put together by Ways and Means, just an idea of the tax burden by project on the average home. That would be good to see. I think town meeting would appreciate seeing something like that, and I don't know if, you know, John Eiler or somebody on Ways and Means can put that together, if that exists, because we do have all these capital projects coming down. And your purview is right now Fox Hill, so just specifically for that one, it would be good to see just the average taxpayer, how this is going to affect them. Is that something... Yeah, go ahead.
No, through the chair, Ms. Colley, that we have those numbers, and just last week, the MSBA board approved our financial agreement, so that will be part of our presentation. And so, we'll know the reimbursement rate that we have, and Ways and Means has been estimating the cost on the average home throughout the process. So, I'm going to probably misquote, but I think folks here, was it roughly around $200? Bob is telling me $214 for the average home. Does that sound about right for you guys? I think is sort of what they were saying. In the average house, they had about $780,000, I think was the house price they had. So, they were looking at under $20 a month, I think is sort of the number Ways and Means was using.
Okay. And we talked a little bit about Pine Glen. Sorry.
Hold on.
Sorry.
What time is our program?
We'll be right back after these verbal lectures.
It doesn't want me to start it.
Toothpaste advertisement comes up.
It doesn't. It's not... I don't know. It won't get me to start it. It's in... It's enjoying.
Right, I'm into it.
Yeah, you're right. We're right.
Stop.
Right.
But you...
I don't see it.
Yep. You're getting faster.
You're getting good at this.
Get down to science.
Can I go?
Yes, go ahead. Yep.
I just got a text, so I think I misspoke. It was around $214 a year and about under $20 a month. So, I think someone said, I said $200 a month. That's not the case.
$0.60 a day.
Yeah, so roughly.
We support this child.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. No, I think one of my biggest concerns through all this, and I've had many, was the Pine Glen folks, and I know you say that building is in good shape and it's going to last a while, but I do feel like, you know, maybe they've been left behind a little bit, and I do think that our school administration, our school committee, they put a ton of emphasis on equity, and I don't know that our collective student body in Burlington was served from an equitable lens, you know, in terms of facilities and moving forward. You know, are we leaving Pine Glen behind? So, that's always a concern of mine. Has there been any discussions about doing a feasibility study on Pine Glen?
Yeah, the school committee has talked about it, and it's a standing agenda item for us to look at that. And the sort of the least equitable elementary school currently is Fox Hill, so we are addressing equity by replacing Fox Hill. And I think there's lots of different ways to look at equity, and what we are really careful about is programmatic equity, class-size equity, you know, making sure all the kids have access to common technology, wireless. Now, the building is going to have heating and air conditioning, so there's, we're trying to create that. Again, Pine Glen is well-constructed and sort of conservatively constructed and is much better suited to delivering a program in 2024, 2025 moving forward than Fox Hill. Fox Hill was a design that was for open classrooms, served its time well in the late '60s, has accordion walls that no longer move, they're not soundproof. The design is just flawed for today's type of educational programming. Pine Glen is not. So, I do think Pine Glen provides a very equitable programmatic experience for students, even though the building envelope is from the late '60s. So, again, that's, Ms. Colley, we do really pay attention to equity carefully.
Okay. And then, you know, I've been following along very closely, like many people in town. I don't know that I've seen, and maybe I just missed this because I can't watch every single meeting, but what the fields are going to be like and whether that's going to be open to the community to use. You know, fields are always a concern, as we know from the last town meeting. So, and I wonder if, you know, those are going to be specifically just for Fox Hill kids?
I'll let Bob answer the specific field question, and then I'll tell you about one of the strategies we were considering and maybe get your input back on that, so...
So, specifically, what's been proposed is there's enough room for three U-10 soccer fields or the equivalent of one U-10 plus one full-size lacrosse-soccer field. So, it hasn't been determined yet whether or not it would be lined or striped for both or lined or striped for one individual sport. It also has the ability to add baseball, but at a U-10 capacity, just inside diamond, and then it would be multipurpose to use the turf or the grass. I don't want to... Let me back up for a second. Not turf, use the grass in the outfield during baseball or kickball during school times and so forth. So, simultaneously, the max that could happen is three U-10s, right? But at one time, you could maximize and stripe for one full-size lacrosse or soccer, or you could have a junior U-10 baseball diamond.
Okay. And would that be open for a BDSMA to use?
Of course.
Or Burlington lacrosse, that kind of thing?
Of course.
So, my strategy, given town meeting's propensity to support field projects, is basically to say this is a $100 million, three U-10 soccer fields, and by getting those fields, you also get a new elementary school as a bonus. So, we could also prioritize the fields as part of our presentation.
And this is probably a really dumb question, but so like, the budget includes just the building, fields, the parking, all of the infrastructure around it? Is that accurate? That's a really dumb question, but just making sure.
Yeah, the only thing, honestly, I think it may not, is there's some ads for, I think, photo... solar panels, photovoltaics. I have a hard time saying that. So, the number of panels and all that is something that the school building committee needs to look at, and that's going to depend on the payback and on those models.
Right. And some sort of like grant or payback or subsidy or something that comes with that?
Yes.
Do we know that amount?
I think they were saying there's up to $5 million for energy rebates, both from the federal government and then MassSave, I think the combination of the two. And again, this is designed to be an all-electric building with using geothermal wells to heat and cool the building.
Okay. I mean, I can go and say my personal opinion, or we can save it for if we're going to vote or...
You have the floor right now.
Okay. Well, okay, I'll just... So, I have not been a fan of how everything has gone down with this, and it's not a knock on you guys, it's more just like a community... It was, it was, there was a lot of, in my opinion, fear-mongering around the idea of a bigger butterfly school and a lot of animus towards people who spoke in favor of it. And therefore, my feeling is that with all that hostility and that sort of political maneuvering around the school, many people in town were silent and didn't want to speak up. So, I feel that there may be a false perception of that everybody wanted this small school, but it was really that maybe people just didn't want to speak up. But anyway, that's just my feeling about how it's happened. Now, we're in this position where, you know, we're potentially approving a building that serves a quarter of our students when it was on the table that 50% of our students could have got a brand-new building. So, anyway, despite all that, I have a lot of reservations about how we got here. This is the project in front of us now, and it's our job as a body to sort of weigh the beneficiaries, benefits from this, and who takes the burden of the higher taxes. I think a lot of people would argue this is only one elementary school. However, investing in our schools benefits the whole town. Better schools attract families and businesses, boost our economy, it can foster a sense of community and pride and just, you know, a better overall quality of life. So, the school needs to be replaced. The financial impact is going to be there no matter what or when it happens, and the more we wait, the financial impact is going to be going up and up and up. So, we've already invested one and a half million dollars in the design phase of this. We have $30 million in the wings from the state. I would hate to see any more money or time wasted with our Fox Hill kids and teachers in a subpar building. So, despite all of my reservations and hesitations, I would be in support of this project.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
I don't want to speak, right? My turn? Gentlemen? The only question I have, I'm definitely in support of this, there's no question about it at all, in my mind at all. If town meeting decides to not fund this, where do we go?
Well, I think I'll come back in January and try to take advantage of the million and a half dollars and have a warrant for a new Fox Hill in January. It'll just be $30 million more. Mr. Morandi, I don't mean to be sort of flippant in the response, but the need doesn't go away. What goes away is the state's support for the project. Can't understate the competitiveness of the MSBA that's a tremendous track record for getting grant money from the, from the state. So, so again, Mr. Morandi, the need doesn't go away. This isn't a want, this is a need from a school perspective, from my perspective. And I think that's what happens in it's, the, the way the process is scripted, it's, there's sort of a, comes a time when there's a decision that needs to be made. There's demand for this $30 million. It's not like the state's going to hold off and say, okay, you had a negative vote, try again in January. Another community is going to come in and, and, and take the funding right away because of the backed-up demand. So September town meeting is, is the vote for this project and state support. So that's, that's kind of it. I don't know.
I think I.
Paul, I don't want to overstate it, but I'm just saying, I think that's, it's a one, kind of a one-shot deal with this. I haven't heard of anyone sort of saying you can come back and do it.
That's 100% accurate.
So I, again, I don't want to.
Okay.
Not being overly dramatic, it's just when the, how the process works.
So I think I heard the answer to this next question I have in that, in that right there. The MSBA funding, will it, will it affect other projects if town meeting decides to not fund this? Will that affect other projects coming into the town?
Again, Mr. Morandi, I don't control the, the MSBA, but in looking at what other communities have done, so if Switch, if Switch is an example where they, town meeting didn't approve an MSBA project, an elementary project, and I think it's been four or five years that they've been trying to work with the MSBA to get approval again into the pipeline. They start the process new every year, so even if you've been accepted one year, doesn't mean you'll be accepted in a, in a future year. So what would the impact be? I certainly can't say. I like the fact that they agreed that the building needs to be replaced, or else they wouldn't have brought it into the grant pipeline. So they agree with that analysis. But it could be in another number of years before we could even have another project considered or a partnership with the state. But please, I, I, I don't know any of that for, for sure or factually, but I can just look at sort of patterns and, and history from other communities.
Okay, thank you. Just on another note, Sarah, I, I agree with you on some of the things that you had said about the way this whole project went down. I think it was on both sides of the fence, whether you were for the big school, the butterfly school, the little school, whichever it went. I thought there was a lot of animosity that went on between different groups of people at different times. I don't think there was enough transparency for everybody. I think there was a lot of stuff that went on behind the scenes that we as a board of selectmen had nothing to do with or no call whatsoever on it. It was a school committee issue. So I agree with you on a lot of that stuff, but that's just the way these things end up going a lot of times in town. You got this group and this group, and then they clash, and then it's all of a sudden, well, I can't stand that person because they're going to vote this way, they're going to vote that way. But as far as our board goes, I love the way that we stick together, we're always together. I don't think that, I think, don't think that, that particular issue, it was so intense while it was going on. We finally got to a stage where we have a school coming in front of us that we all want to see. Some people don't, but most of us want to see it in a certain way. So I'm going to ask this board, do you want to take a vote on this issue tonight or on the, on the funding itself? Anybody want to say anything about it? Raise your hands, do you want to take a vote on this tonight or not?
I do. I think I've already made that.
Yep, you did, you did.
But I just want, I mean, I'm, I'm with Sarah. I think that, that chunk of town meeting without us having voted.
All right. All right. I'm up for the board, okay? All right.
What did you say?
What was that?
I, I didn't say anything, but I'm not going to nod. I guess we're going to break tradition here, but I'll say yes, let's take a motion.
Okay. All right.
There's three votes.
There's three votes right there. Okay. Awesome, thank you. John, what, do we just vote on this now? Do we go further? Do we?
I would say we might as well vote, vote this now, since you've had a thorough discussion on it.
All right, great. Yes, Michael.
Before we vote, I would like to say, this is a very difficult vote for us, and I'm glad that it's on town meeting and not us. We do need a new Fox Hill, there's no doubt. And I'm very concerned about getting a new high school, so I think that's a very dire need. And I'm going to be voting against this warrant article. And my reason why is that I'm opposed not to a Fox Hill school. We do need it, I see it. And it's very hard to turn away that MSBA money with, I'm glad my vote is just a, just an opinion vote, not, town meeting has the hard decision. But I really think if we're going to spend $100 million on a school for 325 kids, that that should go on a debt exclusion and have the town decide. We're in a tenuous spot economically as a town, we have empty office buildings, and I feel like if we're going to do this, that the taxpayers should have a voice in spending this money. And that's the only reason why I'll be voting against this. I'm in favor of a new Fox Hill. I'm in favor of what the building committee has done, even though it was a little bit tough process, tough road to get there. I'm, I love keeping the four-school model, but I'm not in favor of the plan that Ways and Means has come forward with on this. Put these two projects through now, and we're going to come before the town in April and ask them to vote to raise their taxes on two projects that are already underway. It's not going to pass. Nobody's going to understand it, and no one's going to advocate for it. And if that passes, I'll eat my hat. And that's where I have to speak up here, and that's what my whole problem with the whole process has been. It's not the school, it's not what school we chose, but it's, as a member of the select board, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town, and I do not think that the plan that Ways and Means has come forward with is the most responsible plan, and that is my only opposition. I'm in favor of the schools, I'm in favor of what we were doing in the schools, we have such great teachers, I'm in support of all of them, but I just can't look residents in the face and say, no, we, we're putting that through and there's not going to be a vote on it. And I think we need a new high school, and that also has to go on a debt exclusion. And going forward, I think every major project we have going forward in town has to go on a debt exclusion, just because of where we are. We're coming up against a tax levy, and a lot of people don't understand it. It took me a long while to understand it, and all of these projects scare me. And that's the reason why I'll be voting against it. It has nothing to do with the school, the decision that was made, it's the financial ramifications of what we do if we build this school. And that's, I wanted to say that before my vote and get that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. So at this point, I'll take a, you want, you want to do the same thing we did, we'll take a vote now so they don't have to stay here for the rest of it? That work for you? Okay, yeah, good? Okay. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to voice our approval. We're not approving or.
Nope.
To voice our approval of the Fox Hill School Building Financial Article going forward to town meeting.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's?
Aye.
Stain? Okay. All set. All good?
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Denizio, let's.
Chairman, as we race the clock. So there were six articles we were going to talk about tonight. Two of you have voted, two of you have already talked about clerk and assign, and the other two are a Article III, which is to ask town meeting for permission to temporarily change the use of the Vine Brook station to use as a temporary police station during the construction phase of the police station project. There was a short and all in backup for both company members, just talking about how that plan, you know, when we were back here in May or leading up to May, when we were getting approval for the police station project, we talked about the budget and how we had a placeholder of $2 million for swing space during the construction phase. And that could, what that could look like was a trailer farm on leased land somewhere, a trailer farm on property we have, renting, building out and renting some commercial space, lease, you know, for several year lease on commercial space, or hopefully a town facility that we could do minimal amount of retrofitting to use. Just so happens that Vine Brook has been remissioned, it is available. The architect and the design team have gone through and done some existing conditions. And there is enough gross square footage for us to fit all operations of the current police station on that site, including fleet, vehicles. So that's, that's great news. The idea would be we were going to town meeting to ask for permission to change that use so that we can move full steam ahead with the design of that temporary space at the same time as they're designing the building itself. That is Article III. Do you want me to stop questions? Are there colleagues that can add on that or go on to the next article?
The only thing I wanted to add, John, was it's a temporary change on the use. So when the, town council will be able to answer the legal questions on this for us at town meeting, but when the town acquired the Vine Brook properties and the aquifer there was for water purposes. So town council advised us that we should, shouldn't take this motion to town meeting to allow us to use it temporarily as a police station use while we're building the new station.
Okay. Would you like to vote on that right now? Get that one out? And we have one left, right?
We have one left to discuss, but four to vote.
Okay. You want to just wait for all four of them? I'll just wait for all four of them. Go ahead. We'll just wait for all four.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
I know it's temporary space, are they thinking two years?
Yes.
About a year.
Two years?
Yes.
It's going to be a rough two years, but.
Yes.
They're looking at the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, as Chief said during our meeting.
Sure.
Okay. The other article that we're asking the board to take, take a position on is Article VII, which is to fund the administrative professionals' compensation plan. You're hearing about this one every year because this is not a union. This is for all non-union folks. This is department heads, middle management, supervision, technical workers. They, they bargained their cop plan collectively, and they just now vote it every year. Sometimes we vote it at May town meeting, it's, it's approved in negotiated settlements. So we have a separate line where we budget for this each year, just same as if we didn't have like the bargaining agreement for one of the unions, we would budget it this year. And then we come, town meeting approves the plan, we transfer the money into each of the departments to cover all the positions. This covers about 50 non-union folks. What's different this year, we talked a little bit about it back in May, was that over the last year, year and a half, we've been working hard, administration with this group, to come up with a new salary structure, new pace structure for our department heads and management folks. We disinvolved, we hired a professional human resources consultant that was able to do a compensation classification review for us, that which included review of each position, not only for internal equity amongst our folks, but also for external benchmarking against the market of their other comparable communities for that position. That took some time. The goal of that was to get that study done, find out what the positions are paying in the market, and then sort of slot all our positions in a new grid at the 75th percentile of what that position is paying. So we're not saying, this is what this position pays, we want to go to the top. We're saying we feel comfortable being in this, in this 75th percentile, we can remain competitive. So the grid will look a little different than it has in the past. It's, it's basically going to have six, six grades for non-department heads, for supervisors and middle management type, and then five grades, you know, so we grade one through six and then seven through 11. And then the breakdown will be similar to yield grade you used to see, just a, the grading will be different. The idea is four, because everybody's going to move to a new grade, because the grading system doesn't match the numbers of people before, that people will be slotted in a position where they are basically would be perceived like a step increase. So you've got to find a spot on that new grid where you press and you vote. So that's how we're going to do it. So as I said, it doesn't increase the budget at all. We have budgeted about $350,000 back in the May budget for this, in anticipation of this. This request is going to be for just under $310,000. That's 39704 to fund this and happy to answer your question.
Okay.
So same, we talked about it a few years, but a different part this year is that we took some time to work with this group to have a consultant committee to look at what the market is paying for these positions. We've had some turnover at department heads in the last few years, we anticipate we'll have some coming up the next few years. So it was a good time for us to make sure we're in the right spot.
Perfect. Any questions on that one? No. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so I don't have any new to talk about. So you have, the ones you haven't voted on yet are Article III, which is the reuse of Vine Brook, Article IV, which is the town clerk's position, which was a discussion night earlier, Article VII, which is the AMP that we just spoke about, and then Article 19, which is the town common sign that you spoke about.
Yes, sir, Mr..
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve law and articles three, four, seven, and 19.
Okay.
Question on that. So when we say, specifically to four, when we say that we're approved or that we're in favor of, are we in favor of the subcommittee's recommendation, or are we in favor of elected or appointed? Like, I want to clarify that specifically.
But I think we're in favor of the subcommittee's.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
So, so part of your motion is that we're voting in favor of the subcommittee's recommendation to go forward at town meeting for that specific.
So I'll modify it. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve questions three, seven, and 19, and four, which reflects the recommendation of the subcommittee.
All right.
That I can modify. That's why I wanted to make sure we were clear.
Okay, now I need a second. Motion's made in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both abstain, 5-0-0. Perfect. Okay, where are we?
198.
Yep. Marijuana subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning Board has, is in the process of creating a subcommittee to review all items related to marijuana in Burlington. As everybody's aware, it's currently not allowed in town. We did have a recent proposal from a resident to change that, and that proposal was withdrawn this September town meeting. But I think very smartly, Liz and the planning department want to revisit this topic, and they're looking for a couple of select board members to participate on that committee that they're putting together. And again, it's a wide-ranging committee that's just going to take a relook at the area. Do we want this in town? If we do want it in town, where do we want it in town? And those types of issues. So at present, they're, they're looking for two members, two volunteers to step forward on that, so.
Anybody's hands going up?
I will reluctantly volunteer for this.
Where though?
I'll also, I'll also.
I'm out.
I'll, I'll volunteer.
Listen, I don't smoke and I don't smoke, so I'm, I'm out of this one.
I don't smoke either, but I will volunteer for the subcommittee.
I didn't say you did. I wasn't accusing anybody of anything there. I'm just sitting here explaining my personal views.
Joe, I pass on grass.
All right, so we have two members that are, seem very, very excited about going.
Enthusiastic.
Really high on getting there.
Oh, that was good. Oh, there we go.
Come on, I had to do something.
Stop blowing smoke up.
All right, okay.
This committee.
All right, so that's all set. Let's move on.
Moving right along.
Let's see. Subcommittee reports. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the fire apartment. They had a total of 470 calls they responded to, 271 of them were EMS-related. They had put down a house fire, and they had extinguished two brush fires. One call, they asked me to, they indicated, was they responded to the Crossroads Plaza to assist the detail officer that was struck by a motor vehicle, which he's doing well now. It's kind of scary to work in that day. They had a very strong showing at a very well-attended public safety night. Over 3,000 people participated, showed up. Fantastic night. There's video, BeCath did a video, it's out there. One call, they asked me to, they indicated, was they responded to the Crossroads Plaza to assist the detail officer that was struck by a motor vehicle, which he's doing well now. It's kind of scary to work on that day. They had a very strong showing at a very well-attended public safety night, over 3,000 people showed up. Fantastic night, there's video, BCAT did a video, it's out there to see, we'll do it again next year, it's always the first Wednesday in August. Police Station Committee met this week for an update, there'll be more on that to come. Let's see. Mr. Segarino, you going to mention the Green Communities Grant?
I was not, Mr. Chairman.
We, anybody here, I don't want to take, the town got notification, we're recipients. Because we're a green community, Department of Energy for the Commonwealth is giving us, give us a $250,000 grant for four projects, I believe they are at schools on high energy efficiency. And the last thing I have is I attended the Leahy Cancer Walk on Saturday morning, beautiful day, they had more than 500 participants, they surpassed their goal, but as always, they're always looking for more, you know, more to continue the work in trying to fight cancer, just a great event. Talked to, I talked to Dr. Martha Bruce about the partnerships that Burlington, the town of Burlington has with Leahy, and how they're not just in Leahy, but they're part of Burlington. That's what they have for now.
All set?
Yep.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to let everybody know that tomorrow, Tuesday, September 10th, at 2:30 PM, there will be an info session on municipal aggregation, which is our Community Choice Electricity Program at the Council on Aging Building. It's open to everybody. If you attend, feel free to bring your Eversource bill. I understand they're not the most straightforward to read, and we can have people there to help you understand it. But we had a session last week in this room, and that was recorded by BCAT, so that's available on the BCAT YouTube page or Facebook, so you can see that if you're not able to attend tomorrow in person, so you can get an overview of the program and see what kind of questions were raised. Just to remind folks, our supplier will still be Eversource, is that right? I got that right, right? Supply?
Yes.
Okay. Our supplier will still remain Eversource. Our energy provider will be Constellation, starting in October, and that will be reflected on your November bill. So just to keep an eye out for that, and if you have any questions, you can call us at town hall. For Board of Health, Mike and I had the opportunity to attend the opening of the UMass Chan Leahy Medical School last week, which was really interesting, that's going to be a great addition to the community. It's a partnership between the UMass Chan Medical School and Leahy, where students get to, you know, integrate with the Leahy community and our community, and it's sort of a very innovative learning program. So that's, that was a great event to attend. Also wanted to say Household Hazardous Waste Pickup is September 28th, 8:30 AM to noon at Fox Hill School. And then the last thing for Council on Aging, September 25th, 3:00 PM, is the Annual Safety and Wellness Fair at Council on Aging. That's all for me.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, so economic development last Thursday was our first beer garden. I was not able to attend, but the pictures I saw, it was pretty awesome. I know, you were there, I know, you were probably there too. Did you go too?
No, I wasn't.
No, sorry.
Thursday, 15th.
Three out of five. My son had an appointment, so I had to take him to that. But I saw it was expanded, right, and it was packed, right, which is just fantastic. I love how the community has embraced this as a community thing, not just like a beer thing, right? Like, people are coming and just enjoying the space and enjoying each other, and it's fantastic. There's three more through the rest of the month, every Thursday, so if you didn't get a chance to go, check it out. Tomorrow is the ribbon cutting for the Broad Institute. This is the Harvard MIT co-lab that has been building a brand-new facility up on Blue Sky Drive, it's called now, but, you know, where the, it was Network Drive, and, you know, it's just right there off of Millsix Turnpike, where they're going to house their new genomics facility and lab. You know, it's, this is just a really, really cool thing that's coming to Burlington, and a really, really interesting way for us to continually diversify, you know, just the community from a business and education perspective. It's just, it's just very, very, I'm a dork about it, so, you know, that's why I guess I'm talking about it more than I should, but it's just very, very cool, and I encourage folks to check it out. September 21st, People Helping People are doing their Burlington Feud. This board is participating as one of the, you know, challenging participants in how this is going to work. I also learned that my wife is also going to be participating on the, you know, the Family Services team, so now there's like going to be bragging rights in my house for who can actually win this thing.
A literal family feud.
A literal, a true family feud, yeah, we're taking out brass tacks. So everyone come and watch, what will most likely be my wife kicking my rear end. And then, you know, just as a general note, you know, we are back to school, keep an eye out for kids and buses, you know, I was, my kids got on the bus just yesterday, and the bus had not even pulled away or closed the doors, and somebody in opposite traffic felt the need to just kind of go ahead and go around the bus, and I thought that was super unsafe, you know, so I encourage folks to keep your eyes out in the morning and afternoons, as kids are getting crowded on the buses. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, five minutes.
Five minutes, go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Four minutes and 37 seconds.
My fellow board members pretty much took the three things I had, I just want to add, the beer gardens are every Thursday, and they're great, they're, encourage everyone to come out, and I'd like that we expanded the space so there's a little more elbow room this year for Mr. Dinesio and all of his beers, so he has extra room to spread out. I wanted to add to what Sarah said about the opening of the Walden House, that's the UMass Chan Leahy grand opening, and usually those things get a little stuffy with the speeches, but it was actually inspiring that we're going to be educating young minds in the medical field right here in Burlington in partnership with Leahy. And just another one of those things that makes Burlington such a very special place, we're the first regional medical school north of Boston, and they were proud to point out that US News and World Report ranked UMass Chan Medical School number one in the Northeast for medical schools. So we have the best medical school in the Northeast, right on Mall Road, right here in Burlington, and I think they have a class of 32 students that are coming in, and we got to hear great speeches, Senator Friedman was there, and they also had the students there, and it was pretty cool to see the excitement on their faces as they embark on their journey. Lastly, as Jim mentioned, we had the Police Building Committee meeting, I was happy to have another update, we chose a project manager, and as we outlined in the Warren article, we're going to be using the Vine Brook Treatment Facility as a temporary place for the police to work out of while we are building, and we're hoping for just one more thing groundbreaking in November. So a lot of exciting stuff happening, and I will leave, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The only thing I have is real quick, we've got like a minute left, so very quickly, I will not be there on the 21st, I hate to disappoint you all, but I will be in New Hampshire, and I'd really like to thank Lynn for taking my position. She's over there shaking her head no right now, but I'm sorry, but I will be away, and on that note, I would like to make a motion to adjourn before we, oh, Mr. Segarino, I'm sorry.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, motion made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0, good night.